Per year?
Per year. And that includes obviously capital dollars as well. But that was the number we were asked to put forward. That was a week. And we put that forward. And that's what happened.
Thank you.
Representative Farnsworth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a part of an ongoing discussion that we have been having. And I'm wondering if you could give me a progress report on getting Antique Blue Show up here.
Ah. Well Antique Blue Show is actually going to be broadcast live from the Appropriations Committee. This room, once we get the MCC funded, they'll come in. And we'll have people parading in with antique elephants, statuary, and everything. It'll be great.
And antique legislators.
No, it's a familiar request from Representative Farnsworth. And actually produced right down in Boston. We're hoping that we can get them up here to Maine.
Representative Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for your presentation. In your run, you'll be, you'll continue, I'm sure, to have dialogue with the Legislative Council over this issue. But I was just curious if it was already put in place, you were already broadcasting, the cameras were up, everything was a-go. Why was there a price tag that included capital?
Well, it was funded, I can tell you a brief history depending on the committee's, the length of the time we could go into. But the committee, the project was really funded as a startup, as a demonstration to see how it worked. And we borrowed equipment, we bought some new equipment, and we used the existing infrastructure here in the State House to use it. To properly do it, if you think about it, you need to have permanently installed cameras. We have small consumer model cameras in here. And it worked, but not very well. And the wiring, for instance, in the building, the State House building, is insufficient for broadcast, high-quality broadcasts to carry. So there's infrastructure needs, capital requires that need to be done. And from our side, then, over in the Cross Building, we've been fortunate to have good support from both Legislature and the Administration of Space. But ultimately, what we need is ongoing support for staffing. So that's primarily it. So it's staffing and also technology.
Representative Plouffe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm curious why we're giving 1.5 million per year, they can't use some of that to fund MCC?
Well, that's exactly what's, that's a good question because it was done, our budget of $12 million, what we did is we took approximately $200,000 to $300,000 each one of the years and devoted it. It was non-State monies. The state monies are restricted, if you will, to the broadcast towers, to the infrastructure of transmitters, electricity, fuel, maintenance of those towers and transmitters up there. And they had nothing to do with the initiative that our boards funded or authorized for us to spend additional money on that.
So when you say they're restricted, who restricts them to that use?
State law, actually.
Representative Doffe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for your testimony. I'm just wondering with your $400,000 request, I understand the frustration about the equipment and wanting to upgrade that. But I'm wondering, did you calculate out possibly replacing things over a five-year period to bring that price tag down?
We have, one of your colleagues has asked that very question. And in the discussion with the Lords of Counsel, the question was, we'd like to see a long-term funding plan for MCC rather than an ad hoc, year, one year, another year kind of program. And I think this is a good year to do that, to have the discussion. We've put a bill in with the support of some of your colleagues here. And it's being prepared in the Revisers Office with bipartisan support to look at that. And as a separate, specific, long-term question, does the Legislature want to have this service up and running using the statewide broadcast of MTPN? And, you know, focus on issues of transparency and public access for the legislative process? I think it's a good idea, many people do. We hope you'll agree. The question is, does the funding?
Well, I'd just say that, you know, if you get stuck, you could always do a special one-day lunch track for MCC.
Representative Rota?
Thank you. And I just, for the Education Committee, just want you two to focus on the fact that there is a mandate for public broadcasting to provide these emergency signals. And we do not appropriate the funds to cover that fully. And, you know, I think that's another issue that I just wanted to make sure was clear as you deliver the funding. There's a shortfall. Thank you.
Representative Plouffe?
Thank you.
My pleasure. If anyone has any specific questions about these in the future, happy to answer them as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
We're going to move into public comment portion now. We've got 15 people on my list. If you're here for the afternoon, the one o'clock session, we are going to be at least in the next hour to take care of this group of 15. So if you haven't had lunch, please take the opportunity to do so, okay? Also, remind folks that when you come to the microphone, what we're doing in here is broadcast in the building and live on the Internet. And so everything you say is public. And also, whatever you turn in as sort of testimony is also public. When you have the testimony from two clerks, they'll do the distribution thereon. We'll be running a three-minute clock also to try to keep things moving along. And I'll try to hold you to that as best as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I also want to add that there are committee members who are being called to meetings that were set up at lunchtime. And so the fact that people are disappearing, just maybe aren't interested in your testimony doesn't mean that they're leaving just so they can go have lunch. There are other things happening in the State complex, that people are being called away for enablement, building back short, going to be coming in the building. We're all very glad you're here and looking for your testimony.
So first up is Marilyn.
Go ahead, try it.
Is it Meyer?
Meyer.
Meyer.
Okay. Senator Farmfield, Senator Langley, Senator Hamburger, Representative Portondo, members of the committee, thank you for taking my testimony. I'm here as a member of the Board of Agriculture and Advisory Committee for the University of Maine, but also as a farmer. My husband and I bought a farm in 1973, so if you do the math, I've been at this for 41 years. I want to support and encourage you to think about the department, to think about agriculture and education and extension when you're thinking about the university's budget. The land-grant university for us as farmers has been vital. I graduated in 1972 from Colby College, and they don't have a very good agricultural program. They had no agricultural program. I was a history major. When we bought our farm, we relied almost entirely on the extension service from the University of Maine. So I think that, from my perspective, I'd like you to consider, whenever you're thinking dollars for the university, try to remember extension and agriculture, so land-grant university. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you again.
We have Paul Nelson, and then David Bell, Sebastian, Ralph Turner, and Nancy McGrady.
Senator Hamburger, Senator Langley, members of the Committee on Appropriations and Financial Affairs, and members of the Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs, good afternoon. My name is Paul Nelson, and I am the student voting member on the University of Maine System Board of Trustees. In this role, I serve as the voice of over 28,000 students in public higher education in the state of Maine to the systems, board of trustees, and the public community. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to briefly speak about public higher education in the state of Maine and how legislative appropriations are directly correlated to our success as an institution. There are several areas in which the proposed budget would make a large difference, so for current operating costs. However, today, I would like to speak with you about the largest area that directly impacts our students: tuition. As you know, the university system has made the commitment for the past three years to increase tuition at the fiscal year 12 level. This dedication to affordability has not left the system unharmed. Due to the effects of the demographic winter and low enrollment, it would appear that the system had the two options: cut personnel or raise tuition. There is still over a third option, and it lies in the 1.7% increase in education and general funding provided by the governor's budget. The importance of keeping our public institutions affordable cannot be overstated. If you will indulge me, I would like to propose to you an analogy. A college student is like a sculpture, as opposed to a packaged product produced in a factory. These individuals come in all shapes and sizes with a wide range of diverse backgrounds. What I mean to say is that no college student is the same as his or her peers. Because of the affordability of our institutions, students have the ability to experiment in a wide, in a wide range of professional areas. When looking at a field of study, students must look at the market for a specific field in which they are interested. Because the University of Maine system is currently affordable in relation to our competitors, students have the opportunities to get to recent areas that do not have a high salary or in fields that are hard to break into. For instance, the state of Maine is in constant need for qualified education professionals to teach in our local schools. Several campuses of the university system offer various types of education programs, an example of which being the University of Maine at Farmington, which was recognized by a U.S. News and World Report as one of the nation's best colleges for their work in educating the teachers of the state of Maine. This quality, low-cost education allows teachers to work in a relatively low-paying profession without worrying about crippling college debt that would be accrued to other institutions. The education program is a hallmark of the university system, and a similar programmatic successes can be seen in several areas throughout the state. The University of Maine system is committed to keeping my tuition and the tuition of my peers affordable to ensure that every individual has access to higher education in the state of Maine. A stronger university system is a stronger Maine. The university system is the state's most important public asset, and the ability to provide it with resources to thrive is up to you. Thank you again for allowing me some time to speak with you today, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
David Bell.
Good afternoon, Senator Hamburger, Representative Portondo, Senator Langley, and distinguished committee members. I am David Bell, and I come before you today as Chair of the Board of Agriculture. The Board was established by the Legislature in 1997 to advise the Chancellor and the University of Maine President on the research and extension priorities of the agricultural community. And frankly, it came out of concern about the capacity and some of the priorities not being met at that time. I'm here today to strongly support the university budget provisions, specifically the Maine Economic Improvement Fund and the educational and general activities. Research and development is very important to the future of Maine agriculture and food. Agriculture is a growth sector of the Maine economy. Over the last 10 years, from '02 to 2012, according to USDA statistics, the farm gate gross revenue went up by 64%. And interestingly enough, it also went up during a recessionary period from '07 to '12. However, farming is not an easy business, and also is becoming much more knowledge-based. And issues like food safety and the like are becoming much more complex. So research and development is very important to the ag sector, as it is to all the other sectors of the Maine economy. And I also just like to remind the committees that University of Maine does have the explicit tripart mission of teaching, research, and public service. The research part of it is carried up by the Maine Agricultural and Forest Experiment Station. And they have facilities and programs and projects across the state of Maine. And of course, cooperative extension is the educational arm. And one of the neat things about the land-grant system is that through cooperative extension, as soon as something is proven out, it's brought directly into the field and into the business. The Board of Agriculture has been in tune again since its inception to the budget challenges at the university. Just a historical perspective, the University of Maine looks obviously very different than it did 35, 40 years ago when many of us were there. However, we have worked with the university constructively as capacity has been constrained over the years. And in fact, the Board recently worked to combine three departments at the university into the School of Agriculture and Food to try to get front-to-forth synergies as well as administrative synergies. So right now, we're working closely with the Chancellor and the President. Our key concerns are critical faculty capacity, unmet faculty expertise, and the fact that many faculty be retiring in the near future. So in summary, I'd like to thank you for your past support and encourage you to do all that you can for the university. I also passed out, this is the Agricultural Council of Maine Strategic Plan, which has a reference to research and development in it. And also, unfortunately, as Senator Hamburger said, there's a lot going on in the State House today. And John Olson, the Executive Secretary of the Farm Bureau, could not be here, but he did give me his testimony, and it has to be submitted to the record. Thank you.
Don't walk away. Representative Tiberly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, David, for being here. Would you say that under the Cooperative Extension Program, the schooling that they give, that basically, close to 100% of all the farmers, big, small, medium, anything in between, has had some dealings with them at this point in time?
Yes, I would agree with that statement, Representative, especially as far as meeting the diversity of Maine agriculture. And one of the big challenges that the University of Maine has compared to other New England states is that we do have a very diverse agriculture, animal plants and crops, as well as such the farms that you just acknowledged. And, you know, states like Vermont just don't have that diversity. So it's a strength for Maine agriculture, but it's a big challenge in having all those expertise and having that capacity because, you know, there's a handful of experimental farms all around the state that serves all of Maine agriculture.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks again.
Sebastian?
Good afternoon. My name is Sebastian Bell. Senator Hamburger and Langley, Representative Portondo and Cornfield, honorable members of the committee, I am before you today. I'm the Executive Director of the Maine Aquaculture Association, but I'm also a member of the Board of Ag. And so David, our chair, has outlined the Board of Ag's interests. In terms of aquaculture, we are a relatively new farming enterprise in the state. We have about 200 farms in the state. We employ about 650 people and produce about $80 to $100 million worth of product annually. But the most important thing I want to leave you with today is our, because our field is new, because we are learning to grow new species using new techniques, the role of the university is absolutely critical to our members. And we are, if you look back at the last two cluster analysis that have been done on the state, we are the only cluster in both of those analyses which has demonstrated consistent growth in terms of numbers of jobs, gross revenues, and numbers of companies. And as an example of that, we have two new processing plants being built this year in two different areas of the state, one in Trenton and the other in the Damasko and Newcastle area. Both of those plants will be packing and processing shellfish that are grown on Maine farms and employing Maine people. So I will not take any more of your time. I'm here to support the university's budget and the MEIF fund. And I do just want to put a last-minute plug-in for Bill Brennan and the Maine Maritime Academy. We have hired a number of people out of that program. They are well-educated, well-qualified kids that do great in our world, where we're combining both marine operations and biology and business. They're a great group of kids. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions? Ralph Turner?
Senator Hamburger, Representative Portondo, Senator Langley, Representative Cornfield, members of both committees, my name is Ralph Turner. My wife and I own and operate a 15-acre certified organic vegetable farm in Freeport. My wife has degrees from UMaine in soil science and civil engineering, and I have degrees from UMaine in business and mechanical engineering. And I'm here to tell you that we could not run our farm without the university. I'm also here because this budget process funds the university and the Maine Economic Improvement Fund, both of which we consider to be absolutely critical to what we're trying to do. University of Maine just celebrated its 150th anniversary. When the Lincoln administration started the land-grant university system and introduced the concept of the tripart mission of education, research, and outreach, the University of Maine was called the Maine College of Agriculture and Mechanical Arts. To my wife and I, it's no surprise that the natural sciences, including agriculture and engineering, continue to be among the most sought-after programs offered at the university. Over the last 18 years since we started our farm, we've seen dramatic shifts in weather patterns. When we received our engineering degrees, five inches of rain in a 24-hour period was considered a 100-year event. Now it's common to have one or more of these storms in any given year. Changes in weather, changes in pests as insects and weeds continue to adapt, changes in crop varieties as some old standards lose their vigor and new varieties are introduced, changes in technology like robotic milking systems and mechanical cropping systems are just a small sample of what the MEIF funds allow researchers at UMaine to understand and the outreach educators at Cooperative Extension to then teach the rest of us. President Lincoln could not have anticipated how our society would come to interact with the natural world through technology. Yet the fundamental vision of the tripart mission of a land-grant university, including research and outreach, is more important than ever, especially with regard to agriculture and the mechanical arts. In my opinion, the modest increases for the university and the MEIF represented in this budget are not enough. But I understand that may be all we can afford right now. I wish we could do more because I know that our investment in the university helps Maine small businesses be successful and is critical for our future. I urge members of the committee to vote to approve the line items in this budget proposal that would support the university and the MEIF. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions, Ralph? Thank you. Nancy McGrady, and I've got Karen O'Rourke, Tim Foley, Josh Clapp, and Diane Tuck.
Good afternoon, Senator Hamburger, Senator Langley, and members of the distinguished committees. My name is Nancy McGrady, and I'm the Executive Director of the Wild Blueberry Commission of Maine. I'm here in support of the proposed University of Maine system budget, specifically related to increases reflected in the Education and General Activity Budget, as well as the Maine Economic Improvement Fund budget. The Wild Blueberry Commission works on behalf of Maine's 510 or so wild blueberry growers and processors in the areas of research and development, promotion, and public policy. For several decades, wild blueberries has been a growth sector in agriculture and the Maine economy. The Maine wild blueberry crop has perduled since 1984, and 2014 actually yielded the second-largest crop on record. This increase in production is due in large part to the advancements in research and development undertaken by the University of Maine's research and cooperative extension specialists. The partnership between the University of Maine and wild blueberry businesses has been directly supported by the Maine Economic Improvement Fund. Specifically, MEIF funding helps support the Blueberry Hill Farm Experiment Station in Jonesboro, the only scientific laboratory in the United States that is devoted to wild blueberry research. Further, MEIF research funds help university researchers to successfully leverage a $2 million, four-year research project through the United States Department of Agriculture that focused on developing ecologically and economically sustainable wild blueberry cropping systems. This study is helping to identify best practices for wild blueberry growth management, ranging from organic to economic best practices. The proposed increase in MEIF budget funding in this biennial budget will help continue to support needed research and development opportunities in Maine's agricultural sector, as well as across a host of other strategic technology areas. The commission also supports the cost of living increases in the Education General Budget Fund, and this helps to increase support salaries, utilities, and other important operational expenses necessary to the continued success of the university. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Nancy, every time I jump out of an airplane and I have worn my wild blueberry t-shirt.
Wild, big wild. Excellent. Four times, thank God.
Four times. Another one scheduled this year.
Thank you very much.
And I'll have it. Thank you.
Karen O'Rourke?
Good afternoon. Sorry, it's not morning. Senator Langley and Senator Hamburger, my name is Karen O'Rourke, and I was enjoyed speaking committees on appropriations and financial affairs and education and cultural affairs. Thank you very much for having me today. My name is Karen O'Rourke, and I'm the Director of the Maine AHAC Network at the University of New England. And AHAC stands for Area Health Education Centers, but we just like to go by AHAC. I'm here to thank you for your past support of the work of the AHACs and also to request your continued support. You heard from the FAME staff, this is under the FAME appropriation, that the mission of the Maine AHAC network is to alleviate shortages of health professionals in Maine's rural and underserved areas. We do this through the activities of our three AHAC centers located in Bangor at Penoxup County Healthcare, in Farmington at Franklin Memorial Hospital, in Prescott at the Northern Maine Community College. The funds that we receive from the Fund for Healthy Maine are used as part of a required one-to-one match for federal funds from the HERSA to implement the AHAC program. The other two-thirds of the match come from the University of New England. And three-quarters of both the FAME funds and the HERSA funds will go directly to support the programs in our three centers. To make sure Maine's rural communities have healthcare providers they need, AHAC engages evidence-based activities that encourage health professional students to return to rural communities where they live and work. We engage youth, college students, displaced workers, and current health professionals. We expose students and adults to health careers and make sure that they know what they need to do to enter and be successful in those careers. We nurture those from rural communities and provide them with positive rural health experiences because those are the people who are more likely to return to those communities, who make sure that health professionals working in rural areas are given opportunities to complete continuing education programs to keep them current in their field. I'm just going to tell you two quick stories. One is a student, just helps to illustrate what we do. These are both students from Arista County. One went into one of our, what we call, pipeline programs, where we have programs where kids come in for two or three days in the summer, they learn all about health careers. This one student came in, she thought she was going to be a teacher, she came out saying, no, I'm going to be a doctor. She went right to her counselor, figured out what she needed to do in order to be successful. She's now a second-year osteopathic medical student out of state, does plan to return to Arista County. So it's one of the activities that we do with these AHAC funds. The other student is also from Arista County. He's a third-year osteopathic medical student at University of New England. We just sent him off to four weeks to do a clinical rotation at Tannock up in Prescott. He had a wonderful experience, and if you see from the quotes on the testimony that I passed around, he realized what a great experience it is being up and doing rural medicine, and he does plan to come back to Maine. So these are students that we're trying to encourage to come back and practice. And I think, as Representative said earlier, is that we want careers that will keep kids in Maine, young people in Maine, and health careers is the right place to do that. And that's kind of the work that we do with these AHAC funds. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Let's see it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Tim Foley?
Thank you, Senator Hamburger, Representative Portondo, Senator Langley, Representative Cornfield, and the distinguished member of the joint committees. My name is Tim Foley. I am a senior mechanical engineering technology student at the University of Maine, and I am one of the project managers at the University of Maine Advanced Manufacturing Center. And I'm here to testify in favor of the governor's budget to support the University of Maine system, especially the Maine Economic Improvement Fund. You know, just to keep it brief for you guys, I am an out-of-state transfer. I grew up in Virginia, moved to New Hampshire, and came to the University of Maine for my degree in mechanical engineering technology. I was hired in June at the Advanced Manufacturing Center. And due to my time there, I have been able to take part in several projects that benefit the Maine economy, including the Eco Shell Project, which is a company located in Ashland, Maine. We manufactured and designed a production line for the cedar shingle product, which optimized their production as well as reducing waste. Image Boards is a company out of Sevaco, Maine, where we designed, researched, and then developed an idea that's going to be introduced to the snowboard industry very soon. We are currently working on a project for Stringrite, which is located in Auburn, Maine. And we are manufacturing, we are designing a manufacturing line to optimize their product output, as well as increase the production significantly. Other things that I have done to help benefit Maine were my senior capstone project, which was the Lombard Steam Log Collar, as recently seen on, in the AAA magazine, which is housed at the Maine Logging Museum in Bradley, Maine. at the Maine Logging Museum in Bradley, Maine. My work in R&amp;D at AMC has been extremely priceless, and information that has been bestowed to me, and lessons learned, and I am now going to be employed at Lanko Assembly Systems in Westbrook, Maine, and staying in Maine, even though I am an out-of-state transfer. I'll just keep that short for you. Thank you. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Questions? Thank you.
Dear Senator Hamper and distinguished committee members, my name is Joshua Plapp, and I am a professional engineer currently employed at the University of Maine Advanced Structures and Compposites Center, as a program manager leading several large research projects. I am also here to testify in favor of the governor's budget to support the University of Maine system, especially the Maine Economic Improvement Fund. I grew up in Eddington, Maine, and attended John Bab's Memorial High School in Bangor. I came to UMaine in 2001 to study civil engineering because of the excellent and affordable education offered by the College of Engineering. After completing my bachelor's degree, I continued on to graduate school at UMaine. With a research assistantship, my master's project investigated ways to reinforce roads to make them last longer. This grant-funded project not only funded my education, but it also gave me the opportunity to help solve the railroad problem. Since then, I have been working as an engineer on a wide variety of projects, including blast-resistant wood structures to protect our soldiers, secure hybrid composite containers for the Department of Homeland Security, bridge and backpack technology, commercialized by Advanced Infrastructure Technologies in Orno, Maine, Maine DOT's bridge safety program to try to increase the lifespan of our bridges, and currently hypersonic inflatable aerodynamic decelerators for NASA to help us get manned off of Mars one day. Currently continuing my education, pursuing a PhD on the NASA project. Working with NASA is really just one example of a project that opens doors for collaboration with Maine companies, such as Fibromaterials Incorporated and Bonifat Bank, which is the state's largest aerospace composites company. I had the pleasure of visiting them about a week ago to discuss such opportunities. I have been very fortunate to have access to world-class people and facilities at the Advanced Structures and Compposites Center, the Department of Civil Engineering, and all of the University of Maine. I have had a very positive, constructive relationship with the university in all aspects of education and employment. I strongly endorse continued funding for MEIF for the benefit of numerous Maine students, companies, and communities. Thank you for your kind consideration.
And it's impressive what you've got, you guys do there.
Thank you.
I toured a couple of times, and we should run through the list. It's like, yeah, I'm familiar with that stuff. Good job marketing, though, also.
Thank you.
Diane? Tilton? The Honorable? Pay no attention to that clock.
Well, I'm going to guess afternoons and afternoon, everyone. Senator Hamper, Representative Cornfield, and all the distinguished members of both committees. My name is Diane Tilton, and I'm the Executive Director of the Dammist Institute for Applied Marine Research and Education. Our facility is on Great Wasis Island in the town of Beals and serves as the marine field station for the University of Maine at MCHIS. We are a nonprofit organization, and we also perform applied research on commercially important shellfish, and we host hands-on education in marine science for K-12 students and others. I've spent many years working in regional economic development in my prior career, and as some of you know, served in the Legislature, the 124th and 125th. So I'm here to speak in favor of the governor's request to increase the Maine Economic Improvement Fund, which supports research at the campuses of the University of Maine system. The Maine Economic Improvement Fund is fueled, and it fuels the powerful intersection of education and economic development in Maine, and these two things are widely regarded as the two most important aspects of long-term economic development, so I believe they're very important investments. To illustrate, the University of Maine at MCHIS has used MEIF funding over the last two years to allow students, who, these are undergraduate students now, working with marine biology professor and researcher Dr. Brian Beal, to help communities understand how to renew their plant flats and protect them from grain crabs, which, if you've read the news, are a serious problem, and the soft-shore plant industry, which is the second-most valuable fishery in the state of Maine as of the most recent figures. And more research is needed in this area, because it is, grain crabs and other predation is a huge threat to this industry. They've also worked with entrepreneurs to find new ways to culture and grow blue mussels and Arctic surf plants. UMM researchers and students determine the best conditions for spawning and growing juveniles for aquaculture. This project can help bring new money into Maine's economy. These two projects leverage nearly $1 million in federal funds from the National Marine Fisheries Service and the National Science Foundation. With a focus on Maine's marine economy, UMM's research, supported by the Maine Economic Improvement Fund, their small campus initiative, exposes students to the process of innovation, teaching them how to execute controlled experiments, analyze data, make adjustments going forward. These skills advance their educations, provide depth in their academic experiences, and may ultimately allow them to participate in the new economy they're helping to create. Supporting innovation conducted by students and researchers at the University of Maine system, which leads to economic development, is the reason this fund was created, why it has endured, and why it should be increased. So on the back of my testimony, I included a couple of project summaries from the research that I mentioned in my testimony, so if you wanted more details on that. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. I'll see you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Good to see you.